Thank you very much. You have your presentation already submitted, right? Thank you. So whoever's presenting, after your presentation, if you haven't given the digital copy, you could provide it to our recording secretary here. Next delegate is Sir Kyle Ianucci on the Code of Conduct. Ianucci, sorry, not Chi, correct? 10 minutes.
The last time I was here, I spoke to the same matter. I implored you, as a matter of reason, a matter of life or death, and as a matter of faith, to add the terms gender identity, gender expression, marital status, and family status to your code of conduct. I hope to further lay out my reasons again today, and I'm disappointed I have to do so. Good evening, trustees, staff, and to our audience, Happy Trans-Awareness Month! My name is Kyle Ianucci. I was the Chi CDSB student trustee of 2003-2004, and I was the first student trustee to bring matters of LGBTQ protections for students to the board level. I brought it to private session because I was terrified doing it in public would out myself, and my suggestion was immediately shut down. I was destroyed. I knew how I identified, and I knew that a policy reflecting the realities of LGBTQ students was precisely what would have helped me with the bullying I faced and may have helped another student I knew who committed suicide because they couldn't face their family, their school, and their faith. Suicide was also something I too grappled with because I didn't see myself in my home, my friends, my church, and my school. Since then, I've consistently held position of representation or worked in a similar capacity. I worked on Parliament Hill for the Right Honourable Joe Volpe, a member of parliament. I was the president of the Student Association of George Brown College. I was responsible for the Youth Advisory Council of the Pan Am, Para Pan Am Games Organising Committee, personal assistant to Olivia Chow, a member of parliament, and currently a member of the Church Wellesley Neighbourhood Association. In over two decades of representation, I've never come across an organisation so willingly cavalier with established human rights. I don't want to get caught up on the legalities, so I'm confident you have an obligation to uphold the Ontario Human Rights Code since your membership is not homogenous or exclusive. Additionally, there is substantial legal precedent to say that one right does not outweigh another. When Section 93 of the Constitution Act 1867 was established, Catholics were the minority. Catholics were afraid of losing their faith to Protestant state, and so, to guarantee confederation, protections were granted to the minority Catholics of the time, preserving the idea of fairness to minorities. But it was not the spirit of such a deal to in turn dismiss any attempts at fairness by other groups. After all, it is widely studied, reviewed, and accepted that LGBTQ youth are disproportionately affected by hate, harassment, violence, and bullying in school, and that trans youth specifically are even more disproportionately affected than those identifying as lesbian, gay, or bi. Again, this is a matter of life or death. And so I'm reminded of the Sermon on the Mount, where Jesus elevates teachings... Mr. Chair, I'm having a hard time continuing my speech with what's happening back there. Can you please pause my time? She did this at the last meeting as well.
Please maintain some decorum so the delegate can be heard, okay? I'll give you another 10 seconds, Mr. Ianucci. So 18 seconds more. Thank you. Please go ahead. Please be respectful of the proceedings. Okay, please go ahead. 10 more seconds, so 20 seconds.
Privilege, she came with privilege. Privilege. This is a code of conduct issue, and we wouldn't accept this kind of behavior regardless.
All I said was our country...
Sorry, sorry, there's no talking. Please, there's no talking from the gallery, please. So if... Sorry, please don't speak from the gallery. Please, please don't speak from the gallery. Sasha. So, no, Lanty's there. No, no, Lanty's there, taking care of her. Please don't make it more aggravating. Please go ahead, trustee.
That if people don't stay quiet, whether it's one side or the other, everybody's going out.
If you cannot... Well, pride will take in just a minute.
I think you should say that.
So if you cannot maintain silence during the delegation, please leave. Thank you. Trustee DiDomenico.
My point of order is that I've been unable to hear most of the delegation, so I'm wondering if we could ask the delegate if he would like to start at some point again to fully explain his... Go through his delegation. We'll all be quiet, we'll all be respectful, and we'll hear what the delegate has to say because I have not been able to hear it for a number of reasons. If you wouldn't mind, if that's appropriate.
Okay, so what... Where do you think you go, halfway?
Sure.
Okay, please go ahead.
I don't know what that does for time, but I'll just say...
We have 1:08.
Okay. After all, it's widely studied, reviewed, and accepted that LGBTQ youth are disproportionately affected by hate, harassment, violence, and bullying in school, and that trans youth specifically are even more disproportionately affected. And so I'm reminded of the Sermon on the Mount, where Jesus elevates teachings of the Old Testament to new levels and reinforces all that we know to be true of His teachings, that we focus on love and humility in contrast to force and extraction. I'm going to focus on a few lines from the Beatitudes here. "Blessed are the merciful, for they will be shown mercy; blessed are the pure in heart, for they will see God; blessed are you when people insult you, persecute you, and falsely say all kinds of evil against you because of me; rejoice and be glad, because great is your reward in heaven, for in the same way they persecuted the prophets who were before you." I think it's in the final line that Pope Francis found the permission to let go of judgment in the name of Catholicism. The Beatitudes is Jesus telling us, telling you, trustees, that it is okay to love unconditionally and to accept that which you do not understand because of the judgment you face from your mortal neighbours will not match the reward that awaits you in heaven for following Jesus' example. Trustees, no one's asking you to abandon Catholic teachings. In fact, I'm asking you to embrace them in a way you haven't been able to yet, to live as Jesus did, accepting and loving... It's my last sentence. Accepting and loving all is to protect all those in your care. In relation to translate rights, Pope Francis said in 2016, "People must be accompanied, as Jesus accompanied." I'm asking you to accompany my community, to include them in your policy, and to save lives.
Presti di Pasquale.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to receive the delegation and refer to staff.
And seconded by trustee DiDomenico.
Thank you very much for your delegation, Mr. Ianucci. Can you expand on why adding gender expression and identity to our code of conduct is a matter of life and death?
I mean, it was a protection that I wasn't afforded when I sat in this corner of the horseshoe. And so my life in school was deeply affected. I was bullied. And the subject matter of my bullying was something that administrators could barely talk about. I mentioned at the last meeting that my parents went all the way up to the board level to speak to trustees to appeal for help for the bullying that I faced in my elementary school. I let you know at the last meeting that in my third year of bullying from the exact same bully, the principal, the teachers allowed me to be placed in the same classroom as this person for an entire year despite going to a school that had two to three classes per grade. And today, actually, it's interesting because I read in the newspaper about... This was in regards to Muslim immigrants, but very much parallels the experience of LGBTQ youth, that living a double life is a common experience of LGBTQ youth. It's the only way to survive, quite frankly. I lived two lives until I was 21 years old and had the confidence to tell my parents who I was. And Dr. Yousra Ahmad, a psychiatrist at the University Health Network and lecturer at U of T, said, "Being unable to be truthful to others and thus true to yourself can manifest in depression, anxiety, panic attacks, eating disorders, and self-harm." Even more fundamentally, she said, "This phenomenon could lead to insecurities and self-esteem challenges that impact a young person's transition into adulthood." So I think the reasons are clear.
Thank you for that. Part of the impression I got from your response is that including these protected categories specifically helps to end the stigma around these protected categories.
Yeah, I mean stigma would definitely be a big help, but it also does more than that. It empowers your staff with the tools to be able to actually confront the issues and to use the proper language to do so.
Great. You'd mentioned that LGBTQ and trans youth are disproportionately affected by hate and violence at school. How does adding these protected categories help to protect them?
I think it's the same answer as my last one. It's about being explicit in who it is that you are protecting. If no terms are required, then the policy should be termless. But it goes to the extent of identifying other groups. And so why would a board that's rooted in faith go to the extent of eliminating a couple of the groups that are already enshrined in the Ontario Human Rights Code? It's counterintuitive to everything this board believes in.
Thank you. So if we were to remove the existing protected categories that are in the code, what message do you think that that would send to, you know, the marginalised at our schools?
Try it and have a board meeting and open up the delegations beyond 10 and see what happens.
Thank you very much for your answers.
Thank you, trustee DiPasquale. Trustee Delgrande.
Thank you. Thank you for your thoughtfulness and sincerity with this item. Difficult for a lot. Could you tell me, there's a movement afoot to include the terminology that you've expressed, but it would be preambled, almost like a non-withstanding clause that would say that Catholic teaching, et cetera, would be paramount, et cetera. How do you feel about that?
I mean, I think it's an interesting proposition that you'll have to see whether you're able to balance or not. And I think that what I go back to and when I see issues of this type being debated in public forums and when I see Catholics holding firm to older values of the Bible, it just makes me realise that we, as Catholics, have not fully realised what it is to live a life by Jesus' example. And I think that preamble, over time, will eventually dissolve to accept people because the example of eunuchs, for example, people who are... Their sex biologically is fundamentally changed because of forced castration, which happened in the Bible, or the fact that people are born intersex. They're born intersex, you know? This board and that preamble arrives at this idea as if this is a choice. Sexuality is not a choice. Gender, whether you know it or not, is a social construct. It has nothing to do with sex. And the terms involved here, gender identity, you know, it's widely accepted that women wear skirts and men don't. And yet, where my family's from Scotland, the skirt is pretty popular among men. It's called a kilt. So this idea of what defines gender, I think, is what you hope to encapsulate in that preamble. And I think over time, you'll find, as I said earlier, that it will dissolve.
Okay. My focus seems to be on transgendered terminology, et cetera. There's another item expressed as marital status, right? You know that the church's position on marriage is one man, one woman. That's the position of the church, it's a sacrament. In administrating that particular clause, how do you see, for example, people determine marriage differently than the Catholic Church? The common law, polygamy, menage a trois, group marriage, et cetera. How would a school board deal if their teachers, for example, were supposed to be models of Catholic teachers start to involve themselves in these types of cohabitative relations? How would the school board deal with it? Would the school board be within its rights to say to teachers that that's not what we're all about?
Marriage is already legally defined beyond what religion defines it as. And so I think that, similar to this policy and these words before you, the board would simply be compelled to adopt and appreciate the definitions of marriage as it's legally written.
So the church's position on its faith and morals, you're saying, is superseded by these other types of arrangements in secular society?
You've gone to the extent of naming types of marriage that aren't currently defined in Canadian law. Polygamy is not permitted in Canada. The examples that you provided are not permitted in Canada. The only ones that we can talk about that are permitted in Canada are same-sex marriages. And I think that you should be compelled not to hinder someone's ability to make a living and to celebrate their belief in Christ or Catholicism simply because they're a sinner. Why is marriage to another man by a man or marriage to another woman by a woman the sin that you would make paramount to all others? We're all sinners. And so why do you rest your case on those matters? And why does the policy need to be confined to those matters? It doesn't.
So then why bother having a Catholic school system if you can't teach your faith values?
I think that's a question that we'll see answered shortly in the media and through polls and through election results. As the Liberal candidate who wants to see Catholic schools lose their funding, I think we'll start to see what the answer to that question is. Regardless of the fact, there's nothing in Catholic teachings that would prevent you from including everyone.
Okay, we agree to disagree, thank you.
Thank you, trustee Delgrande. Trustee DiDomenico.
Yes, you are here.
Well, thank you very much, Mr. Chair. And Kyle, I may call you Kyle.
Please do.
Thank you very much for coming and giving a heartfelt presentation. In a sense, I'm sure you have to relive moments in your past that you probably would prefer not to, but you've taken the time to speak frankly and honestly as a Catholic and as someone that has served on this board as a student trustee and as a pupil of your feelings and your expressions. And they're very important to us as the board. Quite often, we get caught up in the dogma of our faith, and I think we forget that Jesus Christ's message was love and acceptance. In no way does that... In no way does that stop us from accepting and loving those that oppose us. We need to accept and love all of God's children. And your presentation today, tonight, your presentation tonight is a very good example.
Please be silent. Yes, be silent.
I have teenagers at home, it's okay. I never get through a whole sentence normally, anyway.
Please go ahead, trustee DiDomenico.
Anyway, what I wanted to get at from you, Kyle, if I may, is the code of conduct that we're dealing with, it struck... I did a lot of research on this, a lot of research. I'm going to be honest with you and everyone else that I didn't come with a firm opinion when this first appeared. I've spoken to dozens and dozens of residents, emails, coffee, phone calls. And what I found strange was in our own Equity Action Plan, it's right here. In terms of the Ministry of Education, memorandums, grounds of discrimination, family status, marital status, gender identity, gender expression, sex, sexual orientation, it's in here already. This debate is really a moot point. It's here, we accept it. We love all of our students, their children. You are a child in our system. If we failed you by not loving you for who you are, we should never fail another student again. So on behalf of some of us, I think most of us, I want to, A, thank you for sharing your experience and having to relive it, and apologise for the fact that you represent children, children, students in our system that suffer because we do not accept them the way we should. I believe our board is loving, and our board is Catholic, and we will come to the right conclusion. But I want to thank you, Kyle, for what you've done tonight. And God bless you.
Thank you. Thank you, trustee DiDomenico. Trustee Rizzo.
Thank you very much. And as one of the trustees, and I think that there's only trustee Martino and trustee Kennedy and myself who was here.
And trustee Delgrande.
Oh, well, he came afterwards.
I had him and his son.
And his son, okay. But anyways, welcome back to our boardroom. And I don't remember, but you were here for several years, right, as a student trustee?
I was student trustee for one year, but I was a co-op student. I had graduated at the time, I came back. OAC was... I was the first year not to have OAC, so I elected for a year of OAME. And I came back, and I did that to serve as student trustee. So I was able to take two co-op credits. And so I was student trustee full-time, which meant that I had at least 40 hours a week, but more likely 80 hours and probably 120 hours on weeks with board meetings to be able to travel around the city to talk to students. In fact, my taxi bill was one of the last things that was brought up at one of my last meetings because my taxi spending was so high.
Thank you. I remember you for more than one year, so I didn't remember how it happened, but there you go, now I know. But thank you, and on this issue, I thank you. Have you seen our board report? I know that you were late to this meeting, but they were supposed... Yeah, there's a whole bunch of them there. Did you get to see it?
I haven't had a chance to read it exhaustively. I skimmed through it.
Okay. And the other question that I have is... Late this evening, or earlier this evening, there was a Toronto Star article that indicates that the Catholic Archdiocese has weighed in on the side of inclusivity as the school board battles over gender issues. At least, that's the headline. So the Archdiocese has said, you know, include the language. The bishops with the Institute of Catholic Education have said, include the language. Ontario Human Rights has said, include the language. Stephen Leche, the Minister of Education, has said, include the language. So Kyle, tell me, please, what would stop anybody, anybody, for another minute to do anything but that?
That's a great question. I think there's... I think you might want to pop into the trustee lounge and ask your colleagues that question because I can't answer it. All of the evidence of human rights, I mean, to your new Equity staff person here, you picked quite the meeting to join us, your first one. Welcome. But, you know, everything, and I hope your staff member speaks to the same points that I do, but everything in terms of human rights and everything in terms of the teachings of Jesus as echoed by, you know, the Archdiocese, the bishops, and even the Pope says that acceptance and inclusivity is exactly what we need. I can't imagine a good reason not to include it. And I'd love to spend an hour with the person who doesn't want to include it and try to figure out exactly what's going on in their mind because it's not rooted in fact, it's not rooted in protections for children, it's not rooted in the mission or vision of this board, and it's not rooted in faith. To have faith, Maria, is to make bold decisions without the fear of consequence. It's to make progressive decisions, and it's to make decisions that might not be popular. And when the facts and the science and reason weighs on the side of morality, and that is to include people who have already been included in the Human Rights Code, the only people to be afraid of are people who would judge any of the LGBTQ community.
Thank you. And just one more question that I have. Actually, it's... Yeah, so... I've often said that student trustees have the ability of grounding me, of reminding me often why I'm here and why I should be here. And it's always for the right reasons, I believe. And but more importantly, I'm dumbstruck by the fact that, Kyle, you were sitting here and you were... you are smart, and you're intelligent, and you're charming, and I'm sorry that we failed you when we did in terms of bullying, and I'm sorry that we didn't save your friend from committing suicide. I am sorry about a lot of things that have happened. And I'm just... I'm saying to you, as I say to a lot of our student trustees, like, these are the products that our staff, our caring, compassionate staff have produced, and I'm really proud of you.
Thank you. Thank you, Maria. I'll put a question mark on the end of your statement just to say that if it wasn't for a handful of teachers who allowed me to be myself in high school, who knew what my status was, I don't know where I'd be today. I don't know that I have served the way that I did as student trustee. I don't know that I'd be as established as I am in my career and in my community. I just don't know. So, it was teachers in 2003 and 2004 who went against what the policy was at the time who helped me survive. And you passing these words will give more teachers that permission. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Rizzo. Trustee Lubinski.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to ask that if, by accepting of the definition of gender identity, gender expression, which is against Catholic teachings, are we not asking to give up our denominational rights that were established back in 1867?
Well, I think the spirit of... I think the spirit of why you were granted denominational rights is the spirit that would tell you to exclude these words would be wrong. The reason that you were granted those denominational rights, as I said in my speech, was to guarantee confederation because Catholics were the minority. And, you know, the idea of denominational rights, it's not especially... It's not particularly certain in this case. As for special interest organizations, the membership of this board is not restricted. And so, you know, that's one of the three criteria required to ensure those denominational rights. Moreover, in Syndicate Northcrest versus Anselm in 2004, the courts upheld, "Our jurisprudence does not allow individuals to do so absolutely anything in the name of that," in this case, "religious freedom." Even if individuals demonstrate that they sincerely believe in the religious essence of an action, for example, that a particular practice will subjectively engender a genuine connection with the divine or with the subject or object of their faith, and even if they successfully demonstrate non-trivial or non-insubstantial interference with that practice, they will still have to consider how the exercise of their right impacts upon the rights of others in the context of the competing rights of private individuals. Conduct which would potentially cause harm to or interference with the rights of others would not automatically be protected. The ultimate protection of any particular charter right must be measured in relation to other rights and with a view to the underlying context in which the apparent conflict arises. I think the legal precedent is clear.
Thank you for that. So, my... Please tell me if I'm wrong. It feels like denominational rights are not important, they're old, out of date, and though they are part of the Constitution, they're just... They're not doing anything.
I'm going to do my best to restrain myself right now, but I must say, Trustee Lubinski, how dare you bring up denominational rights in the face of a speaker who's talked about suicide and a life-or-death matter of whether you choose acceptance and the teachings of Jesus, your Savior, or not? How dare you retort to a legal proceeding? In the last meeting I was at, the conversation then revolved around finances and whether the board would receive finances. I was astounded that a board rooted in faith would dissolve to a conversation of denominational rights, denominational rights, not fundamental ones, and money, when a presenter takes it upon themselves to speak to you of how life-threatening it can be to not include all persons as a whole as they were created in the image of God. It's not a choice to be trans, it's not a choice to be gay, it's not a choice to be bi. And so, if it's not a choice, then these are versions of creations of God if we're all created in His image.
I'm glad you mentioned that financial part because I found that measuring our precious Catholic faith by money is not right. That's why it's wrong.
Is there anything else, Trustee Lubinski? Okay.
Is the audience...
Trustee... Thank you. Trustee... Student trustee Nguyen.
Okay. Hi. So, I just want to take the time and thank you once again, Kyle, for coming out and delegating for our students because this means so much to me and for our students. You don't understand. You are courageous and you are kind. So, Taylor and I surveyed 167 students at our most recent Student Senate meeting on October 29th, and we only came... We came to find out that only 0.029% of those students do not want those terms included out of 167. So, what do you have to say to the 162 students who do want these terms?
I congratulate them for standing on the right side of history. I'm glad to see the number is so high. When I was student trustee, it was a much more divisive issue, but the reason that I was compelled to bring the matter to board, I honestly had a conflict of interest in the matter. I desired those protections for myself, even though I was privileged to have a seat at this table. The matter was still divisive at that time in 2003, 2004, but the majority of the student body, the student representation of all the high schools who showed up, was to move forward with suggesting LGBTQ protections at the board level, and this board turned it down. It never saw the light of day. So, you know, I would just... I would thank those students, quite frankly, for continuing to be bold and brave and for advocating, for telling your board, your trustees, what they expect of them.
So, since your time as student trustee until now, you still have not seen any changes within our board?
I think GSAs are now allowed in schools, thanks to the Ontario government for forcing that. I don't think that the board would have arrived at that policy without being compelled to, as might be the case today. Again, so progress has been slow. I always knew that I would come back to speak, and it would be on this matter. I always knew this would be the matter that I would return for. So, it's, you know, 2003, 2004 to now is 15 years. It's a long time for no change.
So, yeah, I just want to thank you once again for coming out and speaking up for our students because it means so much.
Thank you, and congrats on your position, and good luck with the rest of your term.
Thank you.
Thank you, student trustee Nguyen. Is that a typo? Okay. So, no further speakers or questions? Thank you very much, Mr. Nguyen.
Thank you.
At this point, we'll take a seven-minute... Oh, sorry. Sorry about that. All in favor of receipt and referral? Trustee Crawford, Kennedy, Giorgio, Vasquale, Del Grande, Tenouan, De Domenico, De Amico, Rizzo, Lubinski, Lipretti, and Martino? Vows, say none, that's carried. We'll take a seven-minute break, and we'll come back here. Yes? So, we'll have to take a vote. We've been going at it for almost three hours now. Thank you. Okay, so that will be eight. Ms. Queeny, you addition of terms to code of conduct. Three minutes, please.
Good evening. My name is Queeny. I was born and raised in Toronto. My dad and mom immigrated from China and Hong Kong, respectively. I'd like to begin with a hypothetical scenario. If my dad were to say one day that he would like to start a school so his grandchildren could be immersed in Chinese culture by spending a month in that school, he wouldn't hire me to be one of the teachers because I have never lived in China. I could do research and teach the kids in class, but to pass on a culture, it's best done by someone who lives it because it's a way of life. Similarly, the purpose of our Catholic schools is to transmit the teachings of the Catholic Church to students. To do so, we create a Catholic environment by hiring teachers who model the faith to students. Section 93 of the Constitution guarantees the denominational rights of Catholic schools, which means that Catholic schools have the right to transmit the teachings of the Catholic Church. The Catholic faith is best taught by those who live it and who agree with all of the Church's teachings. What about discrimination? Section 151 of the Charter speaks about the equality of each individual, but Section 29 of the Charter states that nothing in the Charter invalidates any rights guaranteed by the Constitution. In other words, the Charter doesn't invalidate the right that Catholic schools have to transmit the teachings of the Catholic Church. The Ontario Human Rights Code speaks about freedom from discrimination, but Section 191 affirms the rights and privileges that Catholic schools enjoy, which is the right to transmit the teachings of the Catholic Church. What about the Ontario Human Rights Commission? They can bring matters up to the Human Rights Tribunal, but the commission doesn't have authority in law. The board's code of conduct does not have to include all the terms suggested by the Ontario Human Rights Commission. In fact, the Archdiocese wrote a beautiful statement which says, "All members of the school community must value and respect the teachings of the Catholic Church, respect and teach others and treat others fairly as children of God, created in the image and likeness of God, of infinite dignity and worth." This phrase unites us, includes all people, even those not covered by any of the proposed grounds. I, for example, was kind of bullied because I was short and fat and didn't dress well. It doesn't include those labels, for example. It eliminates the need to continuously come back to the table to debate whether or not another label should be included. It doesn't compromise the objectives and purpose behind the commission's policies. It says why we shouldn't discriminate against anyone. I'd like to ask all the trustees to support this statement for the code of conduct and to support eliminating the terms of discrimination. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Yu. Any questions from the trustee members? Trustee Del Grande.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Queeny, I've never met you. I didn't know what you looked like, but I know you've done a lot of work, and I want to thank you for the work that you've done.
Thank you.
For personifying the concern about the curriculum and what's in the curriculum, et cetera. So, I do want to thank you. You indicated... You heard the other speakers speak, right? You were here?
I was here for the last speaker, yes.
You were here. And I asked the question about sacramental marriage, and the answer that I got was basically evolving. It's not... I'm not sure I'm paraphrasing it right, but did you have any thoughts about the comments that I received to my question?
I don't quite remember everything that was mentioned, but the Church teaches that Christ instituted seven sacraments. Matrimony was one of them, and it's a way that God gives us grace, the grace to persevere in one's marriage until death, the grace to have the patience to raise children, et cetera. So, marriage, yeah, according to the Church, is a sacrament between a man and a woman from death do they part.
So, would there be something wrong with a God that is loving, but we're taught that there's a hell? Does that, like, does that go with loving everybody, accepting everybody, the whole nine yards? But then, I guess, there's nobody going to hell except me then, so...
So, hell is... Well, when a person...
No, the point that I want to make is that, obviously, in terms of love, et cetera, Jesus said to people after He healed them or what have you, said, you know, "Go and sin no more." He said those words, did He not?
Yes.
So, obviously, Jesus was concerned about the activity, if you will, that put people apart from God, that they would separate themselves from God by sin. And basically, we're taught theologically that that's why Jesus came, to redeem mankind's sin by dying on the cross. So, there was a price to pay. Fundamentally, that's what Catholics, most Catholics, I would say, that follow the faith would accept that to be a truism, correct?
Yes.
So, the arguments about that there's no sin, there's no consequence to sin, that everything is evolving, everything's modern, get with the times, et cetera, doesn't really stand up to 2,000 years of teaching what has been taught, which has been counterculture from the Catholic Church.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Also, these days, I think people want to make everything equal, but good is not equal to bad. Good is better than what's bad.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Del Grande. Trustee Crawford.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to move receipt and referral to staff of Ms. Yu's delegation.
Can I have a second, please? Trustee Del Grande.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I do have a question for you. Can you tell me, did I understand you correctly, that including terms of description can be divisive? You mentioned short, fat, not having... being able to buy expensive clothes, but you also mentioned gender identity. I believe the terms are in your delegation registration. Do you find that divisive?
Well, what I'm saying is the Archdiocesan statement is best because it's inclusive of everybody, and right now, we could add four terms to the code of conduct, but maybe in a year or two or so, somebody else will have another grounds of discrimination. So, to prevent revisiting the debate and debating new labels again, why don't we just include... Why don't we just use the Archdiocesan statement and say, "Everybody should be respected because everybody was made in the image and likeness of God," and that includes everybody? So, we don't have to keep coming back to different groups that feel that they have not been respected.
So, you see... If you could see into the future... So you see, if you could see into the future, you would see more descriptions, more characteristics, more terms down the road?
That's a possibility, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Crawford. Trustee Rizzo.
Thank you very much, and thank you for your delegation to the board. When did you find, did you register early?
Yes, I think so.
Okay, so you knew that we were going to be debating this issue tonight?
No, I registered, I think I registered yesterday.
Because you knew that we were going to be debating this issue tonight?
I wasn't sure.
Okay, thank you. And I asked the last delegate the same question. The archdiocese has agreed to include the terms, the, the four terms, gender identity, gender expression, marital status, and family status. The bishops, the bishops have endorsed a document from the Institute of Catholic Education. The, the parents and the community, the students, it seems that everybody is on board with, with moving forward, stopping the division, moving forward as one so that Catholics aren't, aren't going after other Catholics. And I'm just wondering why you would still maintain your position if the arch, if the archdiocese has already said that it's okay?
May I ask what source you had saying that the archdiocese has...
Maybe I didn't ask the question that I should have. Did you see the report that is, that is before our board tonight?
I did not see it, but I was told that that has still to be confirmed by the archdiocese, that the archdiocese did not agree with those terms.
That is not true. Sorry about that. That is not factual. The archdiocese has agreed to those terms, has, and the staff are recommending that they be included, and that is a fact.
Well, the archdiocese gave the...
That's okay, thank you. You obviously, you know, maybe you missed a step along the way. You know what, it's been a very difficult, controversial issue, so I don't expect you to know, like, you know, luck step, what's happening everywhere. I'm just, I, I just wanted to know what your concerns were. If, if the Cardinal, the Pope had said it, I, you know, I would have, I would have pulled him in if I could, but I couldn't get him. But nonetheless, thank you very, again, for your presentation.
Is there anything else, trustee Rizzo?
No, no.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Lubinski.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just, I'd like to share with you that I also found out about this report just when I came to the horseshoe, so just so you know that you're not the only one.
Thank you.
But I have a question. What concerns me the most is the emails that I'm getting from practicing Catholics who feel marginalized and are afraid to speak about their faith as their children will be affected at school. Why do you think that happens? Why do you think these parents feel afraid and are hesitant to come out? Why did it come to this? Just in your opinion, if you can.
Yeah. I think, well, our faith is countercultural. It's hard to, it's hard to be virtuous sometimes. For example, the Church is teaching on premarital sex. Many people aren't living that. So when you have a lot of people who are living with their boyfriend or living with their girlfriend or whatever, and suddenly you, living chastity, you feel like the minority, and you can feel like you're weird. So it's hard to talk about the Church's stance when many people out there are not living according to Church teaching. I think that's part of the, the challenge.
Thank you for that. And last, last little question. So have you, have you experienced, or has someone experienced that you know that you are named fanatic or radical because you are practicing your Catholic values? Have you experienced that?
Yeah. So I think all Christians, all Catholics, were called to live the faith to the full. Our Lord says that we should give Him our whole heart, whole soul, whole mind, and that seems fanatic to some people. But when you look at it, think of Mother Teresa, for example. Was she a fanatic? I don't think so. She was somebody who was completely in love with God, and because of that love, she was willing to live in complete poverty, to dedicate her entire life to serving the poorest of the poor, yeah, to eating very simple foods. So I think many people mistake in love and dedication to one's faith as being fanatic.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, trustee Lubinski. And, I think no further questions from board members? Thank you very much, Monsieur. So the, was moved by trustee Crawford and seconded by, who was seconding it? Was it? Oh, Del Grande seconded it. Okay, so all in favor? Trustee Crawford, trustee Kennedy, Giorgio, Pasquale, Del Grande, Tanawan, Domenico, Amico, Rizzo, Lubinski, Lepreti, and Martino. Pause, seeing none, that's carried. Thank you very much. The next item, the next speaker...